September 6th meeting of the zoning board of review. We're here on several matters tonight and we're going to, I'll start out with the board of review meeting. There are, I think, four or five matters on here to discuss. Before we start, I'm going to introduce the people who are sitting up here, starting from my far left. John Hall, who's our building and zoning officer. Sitting next to him is Ed Schober. And then to his right is Jennifer Kavanaugh. To my immediate left is Michael Marcello, who is our zoning board lawyer. My name is Lisi Gishite. I'm the chairperson. I don't get any special vote, but I sort of like run the meeting, or try to. To my right is David Collins. To his right, Jay Jackson. And Tara Ferrera is our transcriber-stenographer. So with that in mind, our stenographer is Marian Escobar.
So every member will be voting tonight because of your time.
Okay. All of us will be sitting as voting members tonight. So the first matter on the calendar is a request for a dimensional variance that's been filed by Tiverton LLC, 648 Roxbury Parkway, Roseland, Mass. For a dimensional variance at 196 Bogomash Road, plat 310, lot 148, located in an R40 zoning district to seek to modify a three-unit, two-bedroom floor plan to a six-unit, one-bedroom floor plan. There will be zero changes to the exterior of the building. This is a non-conforming development enlargement or alteration pursuant to Article 14, and the grounds for variance are Article 14, Section 5 and 7. The modification of two-bedroom units to one-bedroom units may be an enlargement or a change of use requiring a variance and additional finding of less nondesirability. Is there someone here to represent the petitioner?
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Court. Nice to see you.
Court Chappell, Law Office, 171 Chase Road. So if you recall, we were here in November, and it is a unique petition.
Can you speak into the microphone because I'm having a hard time hearing now?
Sure. If you call, we were here in November, and it's a unique petition. So the property itself is over two acres, and it's a pre-existing non-conforming multifamily. It's non-conforming because multifamily is not allowed in an R40, but it exists. And when my client bought the property, he began with the back building, and he renovated those, that building into 12 units. Building inspector at the time just counted bedrooms, and he put the number-
I can't hear you.
He put the number of units according to the building inspector. It was multifamily before, it was multifamily after, and he was allowed to do it because it was 100% in the confines of the footprint of the rear building. If you recall, the front building was basically getting condemned. There were three two-bedroom units in it. And when we came here, we struggled with the ordinance because the ordinance said, "If you enlarge a building, you may need to use variance." But we were making the building smaller. And the board ultimately stated that we didn't need relief because we were already grandfathered as a multi-use, and we were making the building smaller. But there is no doubt we represented to you that we would not only hold to the six bedrooms, but that we were building three two-bedroom units. Once that building became smaller in footprint, but 100% more usable than what I call the house that Jack built, with some flat roofs, some trussed roofs, it became apparent that-
You're going to have to keep your voice up.
Okay.
Your voice drops, and I can't hear you.
It became apparent that inside there was adequate space, and my client met with the building inspector and said, "There are, there's room rather than have three two-bedroom units. Can we have six one-bedroom units?" Remember that septic systems and the number of units and density is regulated by DEM, and the septic system is approved for the six-bedroom units. There's no additional stairways, there's no additional building. It is 100% within the confines of the building. Your ordinance, I think, is a little silent to it because it talks about enlarging structures, and it doesn't talk necessarily about intensification of uses. But in Section 5, and I put that memo together for you, it says, "Or otherwise enlarged." And John, I think, felt that it might be up to the board to see whether or not, even though the building itself is not enlarged, even though the septic system is not enlarged, just because we're going from six, from two, I'm sorry, three two-bedroom units to six one-bedroom, people could say that six is higher than three, and that's an enlargement. He suggested that if we made it into one single-family house with six bedrooms, we'd have got the permits, and we would need no relief. If we made it into two three-bedroom units, we could do it as a matter of right as well. But when we made it into four units as opposed to three units, or five, or six, remember, we could have one, one floor could be a two-bedroom unit, and the other two could be one-bedrooms. There's room to do it a number of ways. My client, in looking at this house and knowing what he has already on the property, believes that the one-bedroom units are more fit for this building. It's closer to the road. It is more likely with one-bedroom units not to have children. There's nothing wrong with children, but certainly-
That's your opinion.
I have a lot of them and grandchildren, so I have to have that opinion now, but privately I may join you. It's just, it creates a quieter building. It creates a more professional building. And for him, quite frankly, it allows one unit to be used for a manager because it's the size of the property. It would be nice to have a managerial unit as well. So the issues are, if you call it an enlargement, which may be a stretch, it may not be a stretch, it's a use variance. And as you know, use variances and suggesting to you that there's no beneficial use of the property unless you change it, difficult. If you call it a dimension because it's three units, and now it's going to six, that's a number and dimension, then it's really a fairly simple variance because it's less intense from town services point of view, we believe, to have six one-bedroom units than potential three large two-bedroom units that could have more people in them and more services. And I think we'd meet that it's the least relief necessary because there's no relief necessary. We're not changing a thing on the building. We're not looking for a variance of any kind merely to say, "Can we call this one-bedroom units instead of three?" At personal risk, and not that you need to use this as part of your consideration, but the building was done, and my client in July was trying to seek answers. Through no fault of the board, July meeting was full. It got put onto August, and August was canceled, and here we are in September. So the fire department has approved now, and we have installed a sprinkler system that's only required if there's six units and not required if there was three. We also put the meters in, but that is at, the permits were given knowing that if we don't get the relief, that that was extra money. Extra safety's not a bad thing, don't get me wrong, but extra money that wouldn't need to be spent. So it's really just my argument that as the keeper of the ordinances, isn't it practical that if we're going to have a very nice multi-unit piece of property, does it really matter if we're not intensifying by adding more bedrooms, and in all likelihood, having less people because of how many couples and children and those things could be in the three-bedroom compared to the, in the three two-bedrooms that all have an extra den? I mean, you go into a two-bedroom unit, you can always try to convert a den and those things. As one-bedroom units, they're clearly just nice one-bedroom units. And that kind of makes sense because it really, you could have a couple in each of those units, but there's no way you got room for spare bedrooms and spare kids and those things. So we think it's practical. The fire department is on board because they gave all the permits. But ultimately, it's the interpretation of your ordinance, and whether we can meet a standard, that if you call it a use variance, is pretty difficult.
So you're basically saying that you might not need any relief if we consider that it's not an expansion?
Right.
Or it's a variance, or it's, you're changing the use. Those are the three choices, correct?
Yes. And the first choice, not, no relief, is because all of the enlargement talks about changing a structure, and this doesn't do it.
Right, I understand.
But in that paragraph five, there's a generic thing that says, "Or otherwise enlarges." And if you, otherwise enlarges is to a structure, you don't have it. Otherwise enlarges as, six is bigger than three. And I think John, in fairness, wrestled with it and didn't want to make a decision without giving it to the board to decide.
I would ask Mr. Marcello to weigh in on what he thinks the standard is, since it's, I mean, quite frankly, if the building isn't changing, it's hard to see how this is an intensification of use. But I don't know how everybody else feels about that. Hello? Are you home?
Are you waiting for me now?
Yes.
I'll tell you. To the board, I'm sorry. I believe that it is a enlargement, not, you need a dimensional variance. That's my personal opinion.
Why?
Because you're taking, you have three two-bedroom units, and now you have six. Six units, there were three units, and now there are six units, and I think that's an intensification of a pre-existing non-conforming use. And I think that's-
The bedroom cuts the same?
Even, even though the bedroom went from three units to, three, three separate units that could be rented to six units, you've doubled the rentals in that property. Whether they're one-bedroom or two-bedroom, irrelevant from my perspective, from the town's perspective, but I think you have intensified that use.
And as you know, I think it's the town lawyer's job to tell the board the theory and not for me to argue it here. So as a dimensional variance, then the standard is more than a mere inconvenience, and that it's the least relief necessary. So least relief necessary normally talks about a dimension on how close I'm getting to a lot line, or how much over I'm going on lot coverage. The least relief necessary in this case, no relief necessary except to spend more money on sprinkler systems and electric things. So I think would be that. The more than a mere inconvenience, again, I think that's measured not only from my client, who would like to have a unit for professionals. I think more than a mere inconvenience for the town to have units that require less services. I think the building in the back that houses a couple of kids and the building in the front, that makes sense to house couples or individuals without children, is just part of a marketing ploy. I know sometimes you say, "Well, we're not supposed to consider how much money somebody makes." I assure you, although rent for one-bedrooms aren't as high as two, A plus, A times six might be better than B times three, but between sprinklers and separate kitchens and separate amenities and twice as many bathrooms, it isn't necessarily a moneymaker for him. It's just a better product to service Tiverton, and we believe that the young professional or downsizing senior is a greater houser need, housing need for this area than necessarily some families living in a multifamily together. So I, if, with that standard, that's my best argument I can make on whether we meet it.
Do we wish to offer any testimony from your client? If so, we have to swear a amendment.
Raise your right hand.
The whole truth.
You, you came in November, and we built this building smaller than the old building.
Yes.
Okay. And when you did that and utilized all the space that was available with the removal of trusses in the old building and some of the flat roofs, these units became large enough that you could, if the board granted them, have one-bedroom units instead of two-bedroom units, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And you have checked with, you first asked the building inspector whether you could do that?
Absolutely.
And you went to the fire department and made sure that the sprinkler systems and everything were code?
Absolutely.
And the, drew an electric permit to put in the separate meters-
Everything.
At your own risk?
Yes.
We talked about that?
Yes.
We also confirmed with DEM that it was bedroom-based, and as long as the same amount of bedrooms were there, we weren't intensifying any use on the septic system, is that right?
That's absolutely right.
Now, you have completely renovated the back building, and there's some children in that?
Completely, inside and outside.
It is your hope that this is a room, this is, this building is either with professionals or downsizing couples without children, is that right?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's the law.
Why is it good to separate buildings like that, where that building is children and this building is no children?
Because this is a very nice building, outside and inside, and for me, it's easier to rent one-bedroom than two-bedroom, and to keep the place nice and clean, and you know, as everybody knows how I keep this property, and this is the main reason, and it's too big for two bedrooms.
The people that have inquired about availability have been single people and-
Yeah, I have, I have four or five people right now. My, so wants them, single people.
I believe that's all I have.
John, what's your feeling here?
Like I said, I was uncomfortable making a decision on my own without consulting with counsel. I haven't had to advise the judge. It's just, it's just-
The button? Here we go. I was uncomfortable making the decision on my own, so after consulting with counsel, I decided that it might be better off for the, for you folks to determine, to what level does it arise to. Now, nobody can say, you know, "How did you let him get away with that?"
Okay. Is there any member of the public that wants to ask the witness or Mr. Chappell any questions about this request? Seeing none?
Lisi, I want to ask a question.
Oh, of course, Jay, go ahead.
Can you describe parking? Because now you're going from three, two-bedroom units.
And fair enough. But when, and we should have had that for you, but when we were here, because of the size of the two-bedrooms, we had made sure there were two parking spots for each of the three two-bedroom units, which is what's required. And so six are technically required for the one-bedrooms as well, so we meet the ordinance. We actually have more parking than that, because if you've been to the site, the right side of the building, which I'm going to call north, is an area that is, would hold another eight to 10 cars if necessary, that's never been utilized. It's the, remember, there's, there was the original parking lot on the left side. This is now on the right side. So there is more than adequate parking than both the ordinance calls for and that was there before.
Visiting the site and the back building, it's kind of the direction of traffic goes around a certain, certain way.
Yes.
That's all great. Is there any restrictions that will be needed for traffic circulation around the front of this?
We certainly would be welcome to restrictions. That, right, the parking lot on the right-hand side is adequate for this building, is that right?
They are original, there are two driveways existing, and the one on the right side is construction work now, but there is, as you know, a lot of parking for, more than we need for this.
Okay, let me ask a question. Is there only one curb cut off of Bogomash Road?
There are three curb cuts altogether.
But if you wanted us to dedicate that right parking lot to Lisa's, most landlords like assigned, we like assigned spots anyway, because we don't want, ever want our tenants competing.
Right. I don't want to see people leaving at 7:30 in the morning trying to get to work, and they're all behind each other blowing horn, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. And I was, from my perspective, you talked about the, that was a concern I had about the sprinkler system, because you've kind of jumped from one level at three units to six units, gets you up another notch, so, thank you.
And that fire department has approved that, and it's installed already, right?
Was inspected and approved yesterday. Was from engineer.
Six units?
Yes, absolutely.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone, a member of the public want to be heard? Either way, for or against? Seeing no hands, why, we will close the public hearing and begin our deliberations. How does the board feel about this? Anyone have a problem with this?
I don't. I always look at the building from the outside and from the impact it might have on people passing by, and it really isn't any. I mean, they, most people wouldn't even know if there were three or six units in the building.
Yeah, I mean, the new, that building that was renovated is beautiful.
Yeah.
And, and I agree with Dave that, I don't think from driving by you could tell what's going on in there. I'm not opposed to this.
I think it's beneficial. We're in such a crisis right now, there's just no inventory. So to have six one-bedroom units is going to be a huge impact in the positive market.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I do, too.
Yeah.
Although, it's, it's still a question whether we need to grant the variance or whether no relief is necessary because the building hasn't changed, but-
It covers the base.
We cover the base. So is anyone prepared to make a motion to grant the variance? Well, I'll make the motion, since, clearly, special conditions and circumstances exist that are not applicable. This is a pre-existing non-conforming use, and presently, had permitted a three, two-bedroom units, and the applicant wishes to convert this to six individual units. That the number of bedrooms isn't changing, there's no alteration to the property. I do not believe that this is contrary to the public interest, and it's, again, a not, a previous non-conforming use. It is in line with the fact that we have a terrible housing shortage, and this is going to be more affordable to people who are either starting out in life or downsizing in life. There's not going to be any change in the number of bedrooms or the septic, and this is not an unnecessary hardship, which has not been caused by the applicant. He's already gone ahead and put in the, gone to the expense of putting in the sprinkler system, which certainly benefits the entire building and the neighborhood. So the granting the variance is not going to alter the general character of the surrounding area or offend the comprehensive plan, and that this is the least relief that is required in order to convert this into six individual units. So have I done them all?
I think so.
Yep.
Okay. So I would make the motion to grant it.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Give me a second.
Dave. Okay. The next matter is a dimensional variance that has, a petitioner's been filed by Eva Longobardi at 575 Nana Quackett Road, Tiverton, for a dimensional variance at 575 Nana Quackett Road, plat 404, lot 110, located in an R8 zoning district, seeking to build a 30 by 36 agricultural barn with a 10 by 30 overhang, which exceeds the 844 square feet for an accessory structure. The building is under the height requirement for a primary structure, but over that set for an accessory building. Article 6, Section 6A, requiring accessory structures not exceed 864 feet. Grounds for variance, Article 6, Section A. Applicant needs a 36 by 30 structure to house the number of stalls, tack room, and storage area for a small barn. It is alleged that the request is the least relief necessary, and to deny the same would be more than a mere inconvenience. And I see you're here again, Mr. Chappell.
Again, and, again, Court Chappell, 171 Chase Road in Portsmouth, here for Eva Longoria. You know this property, it's 575 Nana Quackett Road. It is a sprawling, beautiful estate. It has been registered in the farm program since 2009, so it's registered in the state program under farm, forest, and open space. I personally, again, believe that farming is allowed as a matter of right, and if there were no building, if, I'm sorry, if there were no building on this property, this barn would not require us to be here, because the barn would be a primary use. But because, and if we knocked the house down, we don't need to be here. But if we keep the house, John is concerned that we can't have two primary uses. I think every farm has a house and farm buildings. But the way your ordinance reads, an accessory use can't exceed 864 feet, believe it or not, I did 100 different multipliers to try to figure out what that is. It's 32 by 27. It's the only two numbers that come exactly to that number. So it's rather random. This is 36 by 30 for the barn itself, and there is the 10 by 30 overhang, and-
What's the reason for the overhang?
The overhang is, the barn doors fa, you know I'm a horse farm guy. The, the barn doors go directly outside, and it allows the horses to be out of their stall and under the shade and out of, out of the weather, but not confined and locked into their stalls. So you can use the paddock area to, to support the horses without locking them in all day. 36 by 30 for a barn, I assure you, is not large. Standard stalls are 12 by 10. So you're talking a six-stall barn on a magnificent property that's-
How many horses do you have? Oh, I should, we should put you under oath if we're going to ask. We have to raise your right hand.
Eva Longobardi?
So, how many horses do you have now?
I have one horse now.
Okay. What's the, what's the reason for the six-stall barn?
It's actually, the way I have it designed is three-stall, but-
Three-stall, attack room?
Attack room, you could make one of the other rooms into another stall.
Hay storage?
Yes.
Okay. So?
Because once I move my horse, hopefully, to my property, he needs a buddy.
Yeah.
So.
Horses don't, yeah. They're herd animals, as you know.
And the purpose for this barn is strictly for horses?
Her personal, her personal horse barn. Right now, remember, you're under the farm forest or farming statute, and she particularly qualifies under that because of the hay fields, and she hays it. You can qualify by either hay-ing or animal husbandry, or a combination thereof. You have to hay so much of a percentage of your overall farm, and you have, and then every horse takes up two acres, I believe. So if I have 20 acres, I need to have seven horses in order to qualify, when you subtract other things. So part of staying in the farm program is not being a pseudo-farm, it's being a real farm. And part of that is not only the hay product that's produced, but the animals and housing of the animals there that help as well.
Any member of the board have any questions? Any member of the public wish to inquire of Mr. Chappell or the applicant? Come on, step on up here and identify yourself, please. I'm good.
Mark Pfeifer.
Shall we swear you in?
Sure.
Raise your right hand. Could you state your name, please?
Mark Pfeifer. I live at 20 South Court, adjacent to the property. My only question was the location of the barn pursuant to where I am.
This is you? That's the house? This is way over here. We did hear concerns, not directly from Mr. Pfeifer, but from other people who want to-
I'm sorry.
We did hear concerns from people- We did hear concerns from people on South Court that because Eva had cut, she owns a, a lot on South Court, and because she had cut it down and some of the brush off it, contemporaneous with people getting a notice of abutters, I think many of them thought that the barn might be on the residential lot in South Court. It is on the complete other side of the property and well tucked back in. I, I don't know if I have the measurements, but I, I think it would meet 300-foot setbacks in every direction.
That was my only question. I'm satisfied with the design.
Do you have any objection?
I do not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or want to express an opinion either way on this application?
Lisa, I do want to ask a couple of questions.
Of course, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that this barn is a barn and doesn't end up with an apartment on this, above, over the horses and...
No.
So it's, it's strictly for farming?
No, and I've seen the lookout. So it's, it's kind of a manufactured, like a Morton building. It's on a slab, first of all, so there's certainly no basement. There is, the interior is stalled out on the slab with the walkway and the tack room. It's not readily converted at all. Is there a bathroom?
No bathroom.
There's no bathroom in it.
There's no bathroom. How about heat? Do you have heat in there?
Nothing. No electricity. Um, nothing just...
You might have to run a wire, but, other than lights, I, yeah.
And the, the...
Water heaters, sometimes.
The upper portion is required for the hay, the hay loft.
Yeah, so it's a hay loft on the top floor, stalls, runway, tack room on the bottom.
Okay.
But without a bathroom and certainly no kitchen, certainly no amenities to stay there.
Okay, I, I think, obviously, that, I don't know how anybody else feels about this, but we'd want that as a condition, that it not be used for residential purposes.
Absolutely, absolutely fine with that.
Okay. Anybody else want to say anything?
You don't move into the middle.
Okay, oh, come on up. Hi, could you raise your right hand, please?
Sure. Yes. Sharon O'Sullivan. I reside at 47 South Court. I just want to make sure that there is no commercial intent for the barn, meaning having other horses come in, utilizing it in that way, or any type of training, utilizing the public come in for training facilities at all.
I hear what you're saying.
Right now, no.
I, I can't hear anything.
I was, I just wanted to make sure that there was no commercial intent, either training facilities for the horses, jumping, you know, having other horses coming in, other than her own personal horses.
I don't, I didn't hear what your answer was.
Right now, no.
Yeah. I don't know if there's any way we can stop other horses from...
I, I do believe if you look in your use table, the stable, a horse stable, which has been defined in the past as others, and teaching and those things, requires a special use permit. So anybody that was changing this to a commercial operation, as opposed to a barn that services the property and owners and members of the property, would generally need to require a special use permit and be backed before this board, and everybody would be notified.
Do you understand that?
Yes. I have one more question.
Yes.
Is where the proposed barn on wetlands? Okay, that was also brought up. Okay, thank you.
Does that satisfy your concern?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing no hands, we will now close the public hearing and begin our deliberations. Anybody have a problem with this?
No.
Okay. I don't have a problem with it. I think everybody should have horses and a barn. I wish I had one. So...
I'd love to point out for the 100th time, which I'll continue to do until we change our zoning, that we shouldn't have this ordinance for 864 square feet. I'll say it every single time we have these come up, because if you have a 33-acre property, you should be able to have a barn without coming to us.
We're literally at 1% lot coverage.
Another. Every.
So anyone want to make a motion? Let's not all talk at once.
I suppose. I'll make a motion.
Take it away. This is Kavanaugh.
See if I can have a cheat sheet here. Do we have a cheat sheet on this one? All right. I will make a motion to approve this variance, because special conditions and circumstances do exist, because our zoning ordinance has a stipulation for 864 square feet for an accessory structure. Such relief will not be contrary to the public interest. That there is an unnecessary hardship, which the application, our applicant seeks to avoid and shall not be imposed by any prior action of the applicant. That granting the request, that granting of the requested variance will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area. That allowing relief from the provisions of this ordinance, the board shall grant the least variance from the provisions needed. That no non-conforming use of the neighboring land structures or building in the same district shall be considered grounds for ish, for a problem, basically. And then in granting a use variance, the subject plan... Oh, I'm sorry. The...
Hardship suffered. More than a mere inconvenience. Is it legal?
Thanks. In granting the dimensional variance, that the hardship will be suffered by the owner of the subject property if the dimensional variance is not granted. And so I make a motion to approve the variance. Have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Oh.
You seconded. Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Again, I thank you.
Thank you.
You do good night.
Good night. The next matter before the board is a petition that's been filed by Mitchell Moran and Olivia Maxwell, 104 Blueberry Lane, Tiverton, for a dimensional variance at 104 Blueberry Lane. That's Platte 516, Lot 146, located in an R80 zoning district, to construct a detached garage 34 by 30. Article 6, Section A, requiring accessory structures not exceed 864 feet. And the reasons or the grounds for the variance will be discussed at the public hearing. So we're all waiting with bated breath to find out why.
Yes.
Yes. My name is Olivia Maxell Moran. I live at 104 Blueberry Lane.
I'm the, Mitchell Moran.
We also have an expert witness, Donald Mederos, here, who will be giving testimony. If I may, I'm going to ask Donald to just describe our requested relief, our existing site conditions, and our garage proposal.
Hello? Is that better? There we go.
If any member of the public wishes to come down and, and look at the map that's being, that I can't possibly see from here, please feel free to come up here and participate if you wish.
That's the same one we have, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So the, the property's located at 104 Blueberry Lane. It's an R80 zoning district. Blueberry Lane, as you know, comes off, is a dead end cul-de-sac, comes off the westerly side of Crandall Road, just southerly of Phil's Propane, just to give you an idea where, where the property is in general. The Morans' house is near the end of the cul-de-sac. There's basically four more houses past them that would be driving by their house to get to and from their homes. The property has an existing log cabin, three, three-bedroom log cabin on it, open floor plan, cathedral ceilings, well septic system, and a, and a shed. What the Morans', they do not have a garage currently. So what they would like to do is, is build this garage. It is going to be greater than 864 square feet, and that's why we're here for the dimensional variance. We, we're not here for any other variances. We meet all the setbacks. We're, we're under the lot coverage. Our, our existing building coverage is 3.8%, and our proposed building coverage is going to be 5.7%. So we're well under the maximum lot coverage. We also won't need a variance for height or structure. We're under the, the maximum structure height as well for an accessory structure. So, again, just for the size of the footprint being greater than 864 square feet. The property, can I get in here, Olivia, for a second? A picture's worth a thousand words, so I'm just going to approach Madam Chair for the line.
Oh, yeah, please.
Give you some pictures.
Was that in our packet?
These were not.
Do you want to let, list this as one exhibit? A, B, and C?
So the first picture is an aerial photograph, which shows the property outlined in black. It shows also where the location of the proposed garage. It's also depicted on this plan, but as we said, the picture serves better to give you an idea of the neighborhood. You can see from that picture that the first 60 feet, more or less, of, of the front yard along Blueberry Lane is, is densely wooded. The, the log cabin that the Morans live in is, is set greater than, more than halfway back on the property. It's a very private lot. It's private for the Morans, and it's, and it also affords privacy for the neighbors.
Will, will the proposed garage be visible from the street?
When we're done, we believe it will not, because we're leaving approximately 50 to 60 feet.
Six zero.
Approximately five zero to six zero feet of vegetation from the edge of the road back to where we're going to clear for the, for the garage. Basically, we've, we've got about a 10-foot setback of clearing from the, from the vegetation we leave to the edge of the building. So we've basically done everything we can to minimize, to keep the garage as far back from the road to maintain as much of that existing vegetative buffer, maintain it as thick as, as possible. It will continue across the front of the property as it does now, and, and wrap around on the side.
And why, why do you need a garage?
So currently, we live in a log cabin that was built in 1980, and we have not many closets. We would love to have children in the future, and so our storage...
Keep them in the garage?
No. Our storage is very limited. Our basement is too wet to reasonably keep equipment down there, store anything of personal value, so really the purpose is for storage. I also am a traveling nurse practitioner. I drive to patients' homes. I have to take call, and in inclement weather, it would be really, really nice to have a garage to house my vehicle and save me some of the trouble of getting to elderly ill patients.
Without having to clean the vehicle off, of course.
I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
So without having to clean the vehicle off, of course, in inclement weather. Yeah, we're going to house lawn equipment, our, our current daily driver vehicles. The, as you can see, I don't know if there's a picture on the plan there, but there'll be two doors to drive the vehicles in, and there's one smaller door on the side for lawn equipment. The way the house is set up now, there's no way to get the lawn equipment into the house at all. And then the shed that...
I'm sorry, you can't get what into the house?
The lawn equipment. The shed that's on the property now, we bought the house with the existing shed, and it's falling down. So if the garage does get approved, we'd like to take the shed down and dispose of that.
Okay. No one's going to be living in the garage?
Absolutely not. No.
That, that's important. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Yes. Could you explain a little bit about the rain runoff, Dave?
Turn off the justice.
Rain runoff.
Rain runoff, yes. So basically, we've designed two rain gardens to service the roof drainage from the, from the new roof of the new garage. It's been designed in accordance with the Rhode Island D E M practices for roof drainage for existing single-family residential lots, which this is. And basically, half the, the roof of the built, the regulations say that a maximum of 1,000 square feet of roof area can go to one rain garden. So what we've done is, we, we have less than 2,000 square feet, so we know we only need two rain gardens. And basically, half the building will go, will be piped in gutters and downspouts to one rain garden. The other half of the building roof will, by gutters and downspout and pipe, will go to the other rain garden. And if you, if you are or aren't familiar with a rain garden, it's basically a shallow depression in the landscape, approximately eight feet wide, in this case, 16 feet long, probably about eight to 10 inches deep. The, they are planted with vegetation, so that you can actually landscape them nicely into the landscape. And the, the vegetation in the rain gardens, basically, by biological uptake, they help remove contaminants from the, from the rainwater. And it, and it's also a first place for the first flush of rainwater to go. So it's a, it's a good way using landscape features and, and, and not using catch basins and manholes and detention basins to, to manage stormwater runoff. And this is pretty small scale, as you can imagine.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Does any member of the public wish to be heard or ask the representative of the applicant any questions? Does anybody want to be heard either for or against this application? Is there anything else you want to add?
If I could just maybe hit a couple of, hit a couple of points.
Sure.
Madam Chair, I, I think special circumstances exist which are peculiar to the, to the structure involved, not applicable to lands and structures in the neighborhood, and are not due to physical or economic disability of the applicant. As we said, the existing structure is a single-story log cabin. It has an open floor plan and cathedral ceiling, so the ability for the Morans to have reasonable storage space is, is really not possible. As, as Olivia said, the seller is too damp to store, reasonably store items of value, and the property does not even have a garage at this time. And we, we don't believe the requested relief will be contrary to the public interest. We, we believe it's customary and common for a residential lot owner to have a detached garage accessory structure. As we know, zoning allows for accessory structures. So as stated, the property does not have a garage or open floor plan and the cathedral-style ceiling. The structure of the house necessitates the need for storage area in the garage. Not allowing the applicant to have sufficient room in the garage for vehicles, a workshop, lawn and garden equipment, and storage of household items would result in an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And the hardship is not created or imposed by any prior applic, action of the applicants. The house was built in 1980. The applicant's purchased in 2020. And we believe that granting the requested relief would not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan. As we talked about, the, because the Morans now have a dense, thick, vegetated buffer along the road, and they're going to leave approximately 50 to 60 feet of width of that buffer intact, we believe the garage will, will very likely not even be able to be seen from the road. And so we believe we're not going to alter the character of the neighborhood. We believe the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the comp plan will be maintained by promoting the peaceable and reasonable enjoyment of their property without negatively impacting the surrounding area, in particular, or the town as a whole. And again, a detached garage is customary and... And again, a detached garage is customary and reasonable amenity to a single-family property. We touched on, we're asking for the least relief necessary. It's just for the footprint being greater than 864 square feet. We don't need any setback variances. We don't need height variances. And we believe if the variance is not granted, it would amount to more than a mere inconvenience. If the applicants, if the board doesn't see fit to grant the variance, the applicants would be forced, the building of the accessory structure that just won't suit their needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the record will reflect that we've admitted the three exhibits, the photographs, A, B, and C. And if there's no further offer, we'll close the public hearing and begin our deliberations. How does the board feel about this one? I know. Anybody have a problem with this?
No.
Well, I think we all agree that the limitations on accessory structures is kind of unreasonable when it comes to modern life and all the things that we have and the places to put them. So I'll make a motion, and I would move to grant the variance. This is not anything that is due to any physical or economic disability of the applicant. It's not contrary to the public interest. You've made arrangements for the rain garden and to deal with the water. Literal enforcement would result in an unnecessary hardship. The unnecessary hardship which the applicant seeks to avoid is not imposed by any prior action of the applicant. And pure monetary gain or loss is not relevant to any of this. The granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair or the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan. Everybody needs a garage, and it is not unreasonable for people, a couple that probably have two vehicles and patio furniture and lawn equipment. It's hard to shove that into an 864-square-foot structure. No additional dimensional relief is required. And the, excuse me one second, the hardship that you're suffering from not having one amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. So I think I've touched on all the criteria, and I would grant this. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Collins, second. All those in favor? Granted. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next matter that we have, we have been requested to have a member of our zoning board serve on the Town Council Zoning Review Committee, and they are requesting a volunteer or a selection of someone to participate on the zoning review. I think that the Town Council wishes to revisit some of these, and I think you have a very strong interest, Mrs. Cavanagh.
I know, I am happy to do it. So I've asked a few times what the, I've asked a few times what the commitments are. Like, is it monthly? Is it weekly? Is it yearly?
Well, I think we have someone that can answer that question.
Because I would be interested, but I'm trying to not volunteer as much.
Want me to introduce myself? Denise DiMedera is present in the Town Council. I would imagine it's at least monthly meetings, not every week, maybe bi-monthly if things start to progress well.
Okay. I'm happy to join that committee.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You'll enjoy her, she's...
Oh, I know I will.
She has very strong opinions about accessory uses.
That's fine, that's fine. And I think it's really important to have one of your members with us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this point, we have approval of the draft minutes from June 7th and June 29th. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Okay, David and I reviewed them as well. Do I have a motion to accept both of these minutes?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. All those in favor? And that's for both, June 7th and June 29th. And that's... Sorry? Yes. Okay. Before we go on to the other matter, there's an executive session possibility regarding one of the matters regarding Highland Ridge Farm LLC versus the Town of Zoning Board. Appeal of the decision of the Board of July 19th, 2023.
Madam Chair, I did, as a bonus of caution, if the Board did want to go into executive session to discuss this, as you know, the decision of the Board upholding the decision of the building official on the five cease and desist orders was appealed by the applicant, and that is currently pending in Newport Superior Court. Within the last three weeks or so, the applicant filed a motion to stay our decision, which basically, if granted, would allow them to quarry, continue to quarry on the premises pending the final decision by the court. The Town opposed that motion. It was argued two weeks ago Friday in Newport Superior Court before Judge Keough. Judge Keough has indicated that she will be issuing her decision on that stay on September 15th, but until that decision comes, there should be no quarreling or activity at that site. I don't like to say that we're confident that we're going to prevail, because we never know what a judge is going to do, but I did not attend the argument. Mr. Romano did, and he argued on behalf of the Town. And based upon the feedback that I got from him and from the other lawyers, frankly, we think we have a strong case in that she just wants to make sure that her decision is strong enough. So we're waiting for the judge's decision, and we'll take the appropriate action once we have to get the decision. So that's really no need to go to executive session. This was all a matter of public record.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Make the motion to adjourn, and then we're going to go to another meeting.
Oh, okay. Then I will make a motion to adjourn the zoning board review.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. We're going to take a 10-minute break before we take up the next matter. We are going to reconvene the zoning board of appeals meeting and...
They're actually going to convene it.
We are going to convene it right now. And this is an appeal from Secana Partners for a decision of the planning board denying their application for a development plan review for property located at 730 Main Road in Tiverton. Before this hearing, the board has been, has reviewed the entire record of the proceeding before the planning board. So therefore, we've reviewed all the emails, all the plans, all the opinions of people who've testified, and we've reviewed briefs and memorandum from the parties. And we've had all, we've received communications from the abutters that were also relied on by the planning board. The matter is a public hearing, and I see that there are a lot of people here, obviously, that have an interest in this matter. While I'm, we are really loath to not have people speak if they want to speak, unless you have something new that wasn't presented before, we ask that you not speak or keep it very brief. We already have a lot of material that we've reviewed, and so to add more to it at this point, unless it's new material, would be somewhat repetitive. As an appeal board, we are limited by statute to a review of the record and cannot reverse the decision of the planning board except on a finding of prejudicial procedural error, clear error, or the lack of support by the weight of the evidence in the record. So our role here is simply to review everything that the planning board rely on and to determine whether that the decision was based on substantial evidence. So with that, I'd like to invite the applicant to make his presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jay Lynch from the law firm of Moore, Vergadamo, and Lynch, 97 John Clark Road, Middletown, Rhode Island. I'll try to be brief and not regurgitate what I've already submitted to you as part of a appellant's memorandum of law. Just to point out that the property is located in the general commercial district, general business, neighborhood business overlay. The applicant, the appellant sought to construct a crematorium on the site, and pursuant to the use tables in the Tiverton zoning code, mortuaries, funeral homes, and crematories are permitted by right in the G C and neighborhood business district overlay district. The planning board had numerous hearings in this room and at the junior high school concerning the application. We heard from so-called experts about the health hazards of crematoriums on the site. And ultimately, the board denied the application, saying that the proposed use was not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and that it did not promote the public health, safety, and welfare. We were before the planning board under the development plan review process. That process was created by the General Assembly, which empowered local cities and towns to create a development plan and review process. And as part of the enabling legislation, the towns were required to develop an ordinance that set forth all the requirements, procedures, and standards necessary for a proper review and recommendation of the project subject to development plan review. Pursuant to the enabling legislation, the Town of Tiverton adopted Chapter 20 of the zoning ordinance, which is a development plan and review. And in that chapter, the Town Council set out a specific procedure and standards for how the planning board of review was to review a particular application that came before it. The purpose of development plan review was to review the site and architectural plans of the project, of the commercial project. And it was intended to promote a high quality of design, of site design, safe and convenient pedestrian vehicular access. It was also intended to mitigate potential development impacts specifically related to stormwater runoff, soil erosion, and sedimentary control. The new commercial buildings were also subject to architectural design review, where the building, location of the building was determined and whether it was aesthetically pleasing and promoting a walkable, enhanced public realm. That, none of the standards in Chapter 20, those cited standards do not address findings of consistency with the comprehensive plan, nor did it require the applicant to demonstrate that the proposed use promoted public health, safety, and welfare. Article 20 created two specific review processes, and that's in Section 2, 2E of the ordinance. The site plan was intended to address stormwater drainage, soil erosion, sedimentary control, parking, traffic circulation, and pedestrian convenience and safety. Also, the board was empowered to review the architectural design of the building, landscaping, lighting, and appropriate scale for aesthetic suitability. There was a separate review process for the, that the Town created for the planning board to deal with development plan review process. That's Article 22, I'm sorry, Article 20, Section 2.8, where the Town empowered the planning board in matters involving special use permits, variances, and zoning ordinance changes to give an advisory opinion to the ultimate permitting authority as to whether or not those proposed, the special use permit, the variances, or the zoning amendment were consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Those powers to determine, to review the special use permit, zoning change, or zoning variance are not applicable to this case. As I previously stated, the crematory use is permitted by right in this zoning district. When the planning board denied the application, primarily because they determined it did not, it was, the use was not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and did not promote the public health and safety, it committed clear error by exceeding its authority.
That wasn't the only basis for their opinion.
It was primarily the basis. Everything, everything else afterwards was pretextual, in my opinion. They exceeded its authority granted to it under the zoning ordinance and the Rhode Island enabling legislation. Tiverton Town Council had already determined that a crematory did promote the public health, safety, and welfare when it established these uses as permitted by right in this particular zoning district. Only the zoning board has the authority to create a zoning ordinance. Planning board has no authority to overturn the ordinance. This board does not have an authority to overturn the zoning ordinance either and create what is a permitted use as not permitted by right any longer. So the board's excess, I guess exceeding its authority in denying the particular use because of inconsistency with the comprehensive plan was a clear error. The zoning board also exceeded, exceeded its authority by addressing air quality issues. In the record, the zoning board, I'm sorry, the planning board acknowledged that it had no authority over air quality issues. Those were issues solely empowered and directed to D E M. Despite acknowledging that it had no authority to address those issues, the board cited that as one of the basis for denying the application. And as we point out in the memo, air quality is not even a checklist item for design review, development plan review for the planning board.
Mr. Lynch, let me just stop you there. Did you submit any evidence of approval from D E M related to air quality permits or approved stormwater plans?
Well, not for air quality. We had requested a continuance from the board to submit the stormwater management plans, and that request was denied by the planning board. We had indicated that they were under review by D E M, that the engineers had responded to D E M's request for comments. They were not available at that meeting, and despite our request for a continuance to submit those applications, the board denied our request and proceeded with its decision.
Okay. And did you provide your application for the permit to the, to the planning board?
For which permit?
For the air quality permit.
We did not.
And they requested that of you several times, correct?
They requested it.
Yeah. Any reason why you didn't give it to them?
It was not a, it was not subject to the board's jurisdiction review. That's solely a matter for D E M.
And how about the stormwater plan?
That had been submitted to D E M. An application was provided. We did provide evidence at the night of the hearing when it was, the application was denied, that the D E M was still reviewing it. They had commented on it. We had responded to the comments, and we would provide that stormwater management plan... And we would provide that stormwater management plan as approved by D E M at a later date. And the board declined to permit us to proceed with, get a continuance on that.
Okay. How about, there were some issues raised about the low-impact development that was of concern to the town planner?
I think, I believe those matters were addressed at that eve, that hearing as well. When, the night that the application was denied, the app, the engineers, it indicated that they had submitted information and that they wanted additional time to respond to concerns and issues raised by the planner.
Well, I think it was quite, it was quite contested that they never received a report that was dated March 7th of 2023 from Narragansett Engineering. It was never received by the planning board. And, you know, and it was supposedly sent more than one time and they never received it. Can you explain why that was never provided?
I can't explain why it wasn't received by the town. I do know that we did offer to provide that again for the board to consider. And our request to submit that again was denied by the board.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Really, what this comes down to is the issue of whether or not the planning board has the authority to determine that a use that has been determined as permitted by right in a specific district is inappropriate for use in the town. The design review process was not intended to deny a legally permitted use in the town. The planning board went out of its way and kind of tied itself into a pretzel to come up with a theory as to why it could reject the application based upon consistency with the comprehensive plan and the ordinance. For instance, the planning board relied upon Article 1, Section 2 of the zoning ordinance to support its decision that the intended use of a crematorium was not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Article 1, Section 2 is just a statement by the town of the purposes of zoning. It says that all of the regulations, the uses, and the districts that are set within the zoning ordinance are meant to satisfy those 17-plus criteria for particular uses. It is not a checklist for the planning board to go back and review and to have the applicant say, you meet each of, you have to demonstrate to us that you meet each of those 17 criteria for your proposed use on the site. What the board should refer to is Section 3 of the zoning ordinance, which is Article 1, Section 3. That is a statement by the town council that the regulations and standards set forth in the ordinance are consistent with the comprehensive plan. That includes uses permitted by right, uses by special use permit, or use variance. What the town, what the planning board did was ignore the council's directive that all of the uses contained in this code are consistent with the comprehensive plan. They went and they overturned the town council's authority in adopting and crafting a zoning ordinance. And in my opinion, that is a clear error and is excessive of the specific authority granted to the planning board for the design review process.
Well, the whole purposes of zoning, the whole zoning code is to act with the community interest in mind, the health, safety, welfare of the community. And under Section 2 of Article 1, Section 3, rather, it states, "The regulations and standards set forth in the zoning ordinance are consistent with goals and recommendations contained within the Tiverton Comprehensive Plan. In the instance of uncertainty in the construction or application of any section of this ordinance, it shall be construed in a manner that will further implement, further the implementation of and not be contrary to the goals, policies, and applicable elements of the comprehensive plan." So you're saying that despite this section, that the comprehensive plan is irrelevant to the standards that the board has to apply?
No. The town council adopted a zoning ordinance that was consistent with the comprehensive plan. As an aside, as I pointed out in the footnote, when the town adopted its form-based code back in 2014, which set out crematorium, crematorium as a permitted use in the neighborhood business district, it went to the planning board for its advisory opinion. The planning board determined that that form-based code was consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. You know, some, nine years later, it had a different opinion. But that's the review process. What is unambiguous is that this particular use is permitted by right on this site.
And so you're saying that if it's permitted by right, then they'd have no discretion at all?
That's correct. Nor can this board say there's a use that's permitted by right in a particular district when someone comes up and say, "Well, we really don't like, the use is too controversial. We're not going to allow you to carry on a permitted use under the zoning ordinance." That's confiscory. It's a taking of property without due process. And it's improper. It's illegal.
Now, you didn't submit any information relative to the smokestack, right? The height, what the height was going to be?
Yeah, it was, it was as designated on the plan. It was as, we indicated that the plan that was submitted, that was the height of the stack.
And the proposed crematorium was at the bottom of a hill, correct? And the hill went up and there were residences there?
Correct.
And there was no way that you could buffer the smokestack to prevent any impact or adverse effect on the neighbors that lived on the hill above the crematorium?
Well, that's assuming, that's presuming that there would be an adverse impact. And that's what D E M's job is, to determine.
Come on, everybody. Hey, let's, we're not gonna, this is not, this is not gonna be a rabble-rousing event, okay? Please.
That's what D E M is empowered to review and determine that whatever is emanating, when they issue an air quality permit, they have to review what is being proposed and demonstrate that what is, leaving that facility is not going to have any adverse impact on the butters. And that's D E M's job.
Well, they certainly can consider some of these things. But some of the information that was brought out by the witnesses at the hearing are very troubling. And, I mean, I just, I just can't, sitting here on the zoning, as an appeal board, it's hard for me to just not consider those studies. I mean, D E M hasn't even issued a permit. You know, it's sort of speculative about whether they will or they won't. And it just seems to me that there are some areas that are not within the purview of D E M that is still well within the concern of the town in terms of its adverse effects on its residents. So, I mean, I, you know, I, you know, when I read your memo, I, you know, it had some real initial appeal. I mean, because, but I don't think that zoning is that simplistic. That's just my opinion, but, you know. And it seemed like there was an awful lot of other information that was contradictory, contradictory, the hours of operation, whether the buffer could, you know, stop the uphill neighbors from viewing bodies being brought in there. It could be, you know, potentially upsetting to people. Because of the topography of the land. I mean, it was, the topography is something that is undeniable. I mean, you know, I would, would I want a smokestack in my living room window? I don't know. I mean, I, I think that zoning has to look at a bigger picture than just whether. The town council said it's a permitted use. It doesn't stop there.
And I understand your position. And I think those issues that you raised, those are all related to the use of the property. It goes outside the development plan review guidelines that have been adopted. And that's the issue. Did the board exceed its authority? That's laid out in Article 20. You know, the board is not a, you know, a super zoning board, the planning board. It can't say, "Well, even though a use is permitted by right, we don't like it." The planning board is bound by the zoning ordinances. This board is bound by the zoning ordinances. The town is bound by the zoning ordinances. And according to those ordinances, the use is permissible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any member of the board have any questions, Mr. Lynch? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Todd Romano on behalf of the planning board.
Good evening.
A crematorium is permitted by right in the general commercial or neighborhood business zone. We don't dispute that. It's this crematorium on this property that the planning board decided did not satisfy the requirements of Article 20 Development Plan Review. This planning board, as you can tell from its exhaustive decision, took its time to consider all of the evidence that was presented. Unfortunately, the applicant failed to present a lot of evidence to its own detriment, leaving the planning board with only, with the only option to deny this project. Now, listen, tonight you've heard a lot of talk from the applicant. Talk first about the air quality permit. The application was not denied for failure to have an air quality permit. That's clear from the decision. The planning board considered other evidence to include the evidence from Mr. Del Sesto of the Department of Environmental Management, who said that, and he's the guy who issues those air quality permits. He said, "We have limited authority, essentially." We had emails from him in the record stating that he could not affirmatively state that there will be no long-term health concerns due to the crematorium incinerator. He also responded to one of the butters about an air dispersion modeling that may be required and said, "We are not concerned with distance to property lines, location of the nearest homes, property slopes, or properties near the location." This is all set forth in my memorandum. Now, let me say, and in that memorandum, I cited the case of Sarah versus Charlestown Zoning Board of Review, which found that the board's decision in that case to deny a special use permit for a gas station because it was contrary to the public health and safety was not arbitrary or capricious, even though D E M, or, excuse me, even though per D E M, the station would not be prohibited. Same situation here. There was, there was discussion this evening about application of the comprehensive permit. That was absolutely permitted by the planning board.
The comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan, excuse me, thank you. That is absolutely permitted under Section 6 of the DPR review, which incorporates a portion of the subdivision regulations. There's no question about that. And in this case, the planning board explicitly set forth in its decision how the proposed use, although permitted by right, was contrary to and violated the tenets of the comprehensive plan. It put together a table of over a page showing that. It wasn't saying, it being the planning board, was not saying that crematoriums are prohibited as a blank slate or entirely. It's that this crematorium is not permitted on this site. That's what you have to focus on. That's what the planning board focused on. I'm not going to reiterate everything in my memorandum. Oh.
Let me just, let me ask you a question, if I might. How do you respond to Mr. Lynch's argument that the fact that the town council permitted crematoriums was an acknowledgement that it was, it was consistent with the comprehensive plan?
What the town council permitted is crematoriums in that zone. It did not specifically permit a crematorium in that zone on this property. There's still required elements that this application has to meet, which it failed to satisfy. It's that simple, frankly. I want to address the issue about the smokestack. There were no scaled drawings provided showing the actual height of the smokestack. It's my recollection that, that the applicant told us during one of the hearings, it could not tell us the specific height of that smokestack until the final incinerator was decided on, which at that point had not been. And then I will point to the zoning, the planning board's decision, excuse me, on page 14, going on to page 15 of Items Unresolved, which is one of your points from earlier, Madam Chairman. Finally, the applicant's appeal memorandum to this board discussed design review. This was, this was denied on site plan review. It was an upper threshold project subject to site, site review. I'm hot, you're hot. If you have more questions, I'll certainly address those, but.
What's the standard of review here?
I set that forth in my memorandum. And you, you set it forth at the beginning of the hearing. And all I would add to that is that the zoning board cannot substitute, excuse me. Yeah, the zoning board cannot substitute its judgment for that of the planning board's judgment if it conscientiously find that the board's decision was supported by substantial evidence in the whole record. Thus, the critical inquiry is whether, based on the record, the planning board's decision was a reasonable one.
Right. I mean, reasonableness is the touchstone, is it not?
It is. I think we have reasonableness based on our planning board decision of close to 30 pages of multiple hearings. And it's not as though the applicant didn't have time to submit all of the requested information.
Well, I think the applicant's taken the position that he didn't have to because, you know, it was a limited review. I mean, that's.
Agreed.
Yeah.
They took a gamble there.
They took a gamble. I agree.
They heard the concerns of the planning board. They heard the concerns of the, of the neighbors, whether they believed they were necessary to address or not. Well, that's up to them to decide. Clearly, the planning board found that those concerns had to be addressed. And clearly, those concerns are addressed in Article 20 Development Plan Review, Standard of Review, Section 6.
Thank you. Any member of the board have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Romano. And is counsel for the butters present?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Just come on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Stephen Seipol. I represent the Tiverton Residents against the crematorium group that has been active in opposing this project. I really have very little to add to what Mr. Romano has presented to you orally tonight and in writing. I'm a town solicitor myself. I'm often in his position of defending planning board decisions. And his written decision that he helped the board to write and to record is one of the most comprehensive planning board decisions I've ever seen. It lays forth all of the findings of fact, which, which I agree, the standard of review says that you have to defer to the planning board's findings of fact. I agree with the standard of review as you presented it at the opening of the hearing and as Mr. Romano presented it in his presentation tonight and in his memorandum. I think that the, the issue that seems to be the board's focus right now is the fact, you know, this is a permitted use and how do you get past that? And in my submissions to the planning board below, I had cited to a couple of cases that came out of the town of Exeter. I was actually the attorney on those cases. And Mr. Romano cited at least one of them in his memorandum to you. And it was the.
The Davis case?
Well, there was one, Davis versus the town of Exeter, and one was Green Development. Both of them involved solar projects. This was a time when the town of Exeter's zoning ordinance allowed those projects. They said, "They're permitted, they're allowed by right." They were both denied, and those denials were upheld in Superior Court. And exactly what I told the Superior Court was the fact that you have a permitted use. And exactly what I told the Superior Court was the fact that you have a permitted use does not mean the approval process is a rubber stamp. Even though you've got a permitted use, you have a review process and criteria to meet, and that was not done here, both because of the applicant's failure to present information that the board needed and due to the obvious environmental problems and issues this would create in the neighborhood that was supported by uncontroverted expert testimony. There were no experts presented by the applicant to contradict anything that was, you know, put on the record by the experts that were brought in by the track group. So, that being the case, we would ask that you uphold the planning board's decision for all of the reasons that are set forth actually in that decision, in Mr. Romano's memo, and in, you know, my submissions. I did also make to the planning board some procedural arguments having to do with major land development versus development plan review. At this point, you know, where we are here tonight, I am here to fully support...
I understand.
The planning board and Mr. Romano's arguments. Those argue, I do just want to put on the record that I would like to reserve those in the event that there is an appeal to the court.
I understand. Mr. Lynch, I got to ask you a question. What do you say about Davis? I mean, doesn't Davis say that just because it's a permitted use, it can still be contrary to the comprehensive plan?
No, it can't be.
Well, that's what they said.
Well, it's, it's within the parameters of what the planning board has authority and jurisdiction to review. You know, if, if all of a sudden we were going to create a landslide and we were in a bog, we had water quality issues, we had runoff issues, then yes, the planning board can say, "Sorry, that use is not appropriate for the site because you don't meet the design requirements or the site, design requirements."
But that's not my question. The question in Davis was, Davis said you can put in solar, solar panels are a permitted use on property, and they went ahead and said, "No, we're, we're not allowing it because we find it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan."
That, that's, that's...
I mean, I understood your argument to say that, that that issue here is foreclosed because the, by saying it's a permitted use, that the town has made the finding that it's consistent with, with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and that's, that's going to be the argument we're going to make, you know, if this board denies our appeal, that's the argument we're going to make in front of the Newport County Superior Court.
But you would agree that Judge Sarah Taft Carter's opinion flies in the face of your argument?
Different facts and different circumstances, yeah, so it's different.
Okay, so this, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on, on new material?
Good evening, board members.
We're going to swear, we're going to swear you in.
I do. Gerhard Leib.
I'm sorry?
Gerhard, G-E-R-H-A-R-D-L-E-I-B, Leib, L-E-I-B, like Brazil. I'm retired. I live at 620 Old Colony Terrace. Bought the house about two years ago, and what I want to bring up is not that, but the previous experience. For 30 years, I was working for the town of Bristol as planning director, helping the planning board and the zoning board, secretary to both boards, and also in that capacity during those years, working with two committees to revise the zoning code and prepare new zoning codes twice, and with the planning board in the process of doing site plan review, development reviews. And in that process, what I learned from the codes, the state laws, our lawyers, the solicitors presenting the evidence pro and con various developments are two things. One is regards to development plan and the other is regards to the zoning ordinance. I'll bring up those things rather quickly. With regards to development plan, the whole purpose, as you well know, is looking at the impacts of what a proposed development will have on the people, the environment, the traffic, you name it, whatever the impacts might be on the surrounding area. And I'm quite sure that the planning board in this case looked at the evidence presented with regards to what happens when certain bodies are burnt, bodies that may have had had cancer, had cancer treatments, and the result. And I'm quite sure they considered that as part of the evidence of the impacts. They also probably looked at the impact on the traffic of having some facility like this, which will have many cases of burnings happening maybe daily, certainly weekly. Those impacts were considered. Now, let's come back to the zoning ordinance. When we prepared zoning ordinance, I'm sure the same thing happened here in Tiverton, that zoning ordinance are based upon what is understood to be a use. And when a zoning board considers, and a town council considers funeral homes and crematoriums, they think of it what usually has happened with a funeral home and crematorium, namely a certain kind of building, a certain few, bunch of uses, and among the uses might be crematorium. And in this particular case, what they're proposing is not a funeral home and crematorium. They're proposing a crematorium for the burning of bodies. Now, in that case, a crematorium that on a daily basis is burning bodies is not a general business use. It's a manufacturing use, and it's a new kind of use. So, I would propose that the zoning code when it says funeral homes and crematoriums has in mind a use of that with crematorium being incidental to a funeral home, not with regards to a crematorium being purely almost like industrial use that belongs in a manufacturing zone. So, with that being said, let me add one more thing for consideration. My understanding in the state of Mashuset, crematoriums are not permitted because they probably looked at all these aspects and had the codes and the state law updated. And it would be a shame if by virtue of having a crematorium like a manufacturing use here, we're getting additional workload on this site because of people coming, funeral homes, crematoriums in Mashuset, sending bodies here to Rhode Island to be processed. So, in summary, I would say they do not meet the zoning code because that's not a combination of funeral home and crematorium. And secondly, I would propose it does not meet the due process, proper process by planning board to review all the impacts, including the impacts on the neighbors from traffic and from smoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to add something new?
Good evening. So, I've spoken in front of the...
Do you sound as if you're testing my voice?
I do. Yes.
What's your name?
Dr. Robert Bishop.
I'm sorry, your last name?
Dr. Robert Bishop. So, I was rather interested in how the DEM works. What are they really checking? And I learned something very interesting in discussions, and that is what DEM is looking for, the particles on the ground, on the ground. So, if I have at a budding property, how much, how many particles are on my neighbor's ground, not in the air? So, I said, "Well, how does that work?" Because we have a hill behind it. It goes up, you know? We're going to look for particles on the neighboring ground. Well, how do we find out? I mean, you're telling me you're not regulating? Because smoke, we all know, goes up, right? It goes up, the wind blows it up, it doesn't blow it down. That's right, and that's not considered in the DEM. So, how does the town protect the public? So, I think this is one of the problems, I would imagine, that the town board had, right, from a technical standpoint. DEM's looking at particles on the ground. We're about all these people complaining on the hill behind. And so, you can look at that, I think, and I know DEM hasn't come up with a decision, but even if they do, it doesn't look in the air. It only looks on the ground.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Anyone else want, want to speak? Okay, we're seeing no hands. We are about to close the public hearing and deliberate on the very interesting issues that have been raised. Has everybody said what they want to say?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, okay. Who wants to start below the rule?
I'll start. I read all material, and it wasn't blatant that there were any errors. The only questionable error area in my mind, where there might be an area, where it might be an error, would be where it comes to the issue of safe, that's safety issue, and whether or not that's covered by the comprehensive community plan. And I, I think that Article 20 is not clear on that, but I'm, I'm not in a position to say that it prohibits the consideration of safety in their decision. So, in my mind, I, I can't in clear conscience turn them down at this point, or I think I'd have to uphold the decision of the planning board because I can't say with clear conscience that they were wrong. If, if they were wrong, it's, it's a very close call, and, and I think that it's going to have to be resolved at the court level, not at our level. So, that's, that's where I stand.
Thanks. Dave?
Yeah, I'll just second Dave. I mean, I, there's a lot of stuff that's scientifically way over my head, and somebody else is going to have to sort through this to, to figure out that, but I think the planning board did their best to weigh the facts that were presented to them. So, I'm going to also uphold the decision of the planning board.
I'm in agreement. Oh, sorry. I'm in agreement. I think those two case studies or case law studies are very interesting to this particular matter, and it's hard to say. I, I don't feel confident in overturning the decision of the planning board. It does seem as though they, they did correctly procedurally.
I appreciate what, what everybody has commented on tonight. I, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of good points on both sides. At this point, though, I'm reluctant to vote against the planning board because there's just not enough information, and these are two pay grades above me, so...
Well, I feel, I'm in agreement with everyone because the, there were a lot of matters that were unresolved in this record. The physical alteration permit from Rhode Island Department of Transportation, driverly access was never obtained. They never got a, a copy of the air quality permit that was submitted to DEM. It was some obviously conflicting evidence on what the hours of operation were and how many days a week this would be going on. There was certainly controversy regarding who was going to be there with this chapel and whether there were going to be 15 or 20 people there or, or what. There was inconsistent information as far as that was concerned. The height of the smokestack seems to be pretty relevant when it comes to the houses that are upwind and uphill from a crematorium. The explanation of why low-impact development measures were not being implemented for stormwater as required by DEM was, was an area that was still not, not provided to the planning board. Again, this March 7th memo that I referenced before never made it to the town and was only resubmitted at the day the board conducted the hearing. And, you know, I think they were certainly within their rights not to keep extending the time clock. They did not provide any final confirmation from the fire marshal that existing trees and impacting the site had, had been resolved. I think it's axiomatic that whenever a town board considers the effect of development, that focusing on the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community has to be a necessary criteria. The planning board found that the applicant is not provided for control, protection, or abatement of air based on information submitted in the record, and that it would have a negative impact on surrounding residential uses based on the information that was submitted in the record. Qualified medical personnel and other experts testified about the fact, the effects of crematory, of incineration on chemotherapy patients. I, I, I don't think that we can ignore the extensive fact-finding that the planning board went into. I think they were most thorough, and I thought that they gave the applicant sufficient time to, to provide it with the justification for this plan going forward. But I just, I believe that the planning board, their findings of fact were supported by the record, and I, I think that it, that the, it is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and didn't promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. So, I, I think we've touched the base there. I would, I would make a motion to dismiss the appeal and uphold the findings of the planning board.
I second the motion.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Lynch?
I'm not a favorite decision.
Sorry?
Let Mr. Lynch show us the...
You'll get a, a written decision with, with 30 days?
We'll get a written decision.
We'll get a written decision as soon as he writes it. Thank you. I'm, we're still in session. Is there anything else that we need to address tonight? If not, I would make a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
All those in favor? Unanimous?